I guess we'll go ahead and get started. It's at 7:00. So, first thing, I want to welcome everybody here. We'll have the reading of the minutes first, called Reading the Order. We're going to have the minutes first, then we'll have a swearing in. So that... I can't do much until I get sworn in. But we'll do that first. You want to read the minutes?
Yep, I will. Council meeting met, or the council met in regular session at 7:08 PM on December 18th, 2019. The mayor excusing herself from presiding over the meeting. Mayor Jackie Heidman advised that City Attorney Dennis White forwarded a letter to her, which she received from Alan Anderson of Polsonelli-White late this afternoon. Regarding the content of the letter and that he hasn't had time to thoroughly review, Dennis advised Jackie it might be in the city's best interest to allow the President of the Council, Curtis Rempe, to preside over this meeting. So the meeting was called to order by President of the Council, Curtis Rempe. No quorum, Curt advised, that since Dallas will be absent, we will not have enough council persons present to constitute a quorum, so we will not be able to vote on anything. Bills and Treasurers Report. Marlene presented the Bills and Treasurers Report. Brian made a motion to pay bills. Jesse seconded. Old business, closure for the door, kitchen door. Travis Havercamp offered to pick it up and take care of it. Furnace, John Morrison said he had to reset a safety switch again. We need to keep an eye on it. Next era is street proposal. Curt reached out to Dennis White, but Dennis has not had time to reply. Will strive to have something completed prior to the January meeting. Jones House on Main Street. Travis Jones indicated that he will have Travis with HC Inc. complete the remaining repairs. Diane will reach out to Travis H. to make sure he is aware of this. Ameris Jones Dog Municipal Court Hearing was held November 26th at 7:00 PM in the Corning Community Center. She was found to be in violation of the vicious dog ordinance. City received a journal entry of conviction dated 11/26/19 from City Attorney Dennis White, in which Ameris was ordered to have dog removed from the city by December 19th and fined $200 and assessed court costs in the amount of $65 for a total of $265 due to the city within 90 days. Northeast Door on the City Hall. Travis Havercamp has this on his list of jobs to close in and will complete it when time allows. Zoning and Planning Commission Update. Travis Havercamp advised that the Planning Commission met last week and received great input from concerned citizens. Their input, their concerns are being incorporated and updated into the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. There is a public hearing scheduled at this time for January 6th. Lagoon Fencing, Dallas is working on this. Brian requested a bid from Wayne Ryschek. The State Yard Signs. Jackie advised that she had contacted Annette Ruddinghouse, and her prices on a four-by-eight foot sign are as follows. $300 for just stencils. $400 for an aluminum one-eighth inch for outdoor use, but would need to be against a fence or building, and this includes the decals. $500 for a one-quarter inch aluminum with plastic center for outside use on poles with decals. Previous bids were from Becky Breeding. Four-by-eight aluminum, white painted sign with no lettering, $90 plus $45 shipping for a total of $135. These are pretty clumsy, so would need backing. Or four-by-eight aluminum, white painted with corrugated plastic core, $180 and the shipping included. These are much sturdier. New Business. Dennis White raising his rates. Dennis advised that after 35 years of practice, he will be raising his rates for municipalities from 180 to 240 per hour after January 1st. Big Kansas Road Trip. The Big Kansas Road Trip is an annual event in Kansas and will be in our area in 2020. Seneca Chamber of Commerce is organizing this and would like the city of Corning to be involved. City will be looking for volunteers to organize something, and Kylie Lookaroff has offered to come down and visit with us about it. Concerns Concerning the Zoning Hearing Scheduled for January 6th. Questions arose from the floor concerning the hearing scheduled for January 6th regarding the comprehensive plan and zoning hearings. Attorneys Anderson and Bo advised that the hearings were not scheduled with proper action from the council. Curt advised that this is in the hands of our attorney and action will be taken upon his advice. Meeting adjourned. Brian made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Justice seconded. Motion carried.
Since I wasn't here at the last meeting, is there any additions or corrections? All right, good day. Minutes are approved.
Okay.
Next thing we better, I want to get accomplished next is everybody getting sworn in as office holder, I guess. So, we'll take care of that.
Normally, we just, you all can read it together, is how we normally do it, and Dennis said that was fine. So, you each, the new ones, should have it in front of you, so you can read it together if you want.
Good. I, Brian Anderson, do want to swear your word affirming that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
You're not reading.
(laughing).
All right, so I don't.
John's not official. He didn't read it.[392.12][392.12](laughing). He might want to.
I got this from Mary Kay, I think.
Yep. Yeah, she always sends them up. It's the real deal.
Well, after everybody's sworn in, I think the next thing I'd like to do is to get the council bills. So, I'm going to appoint Joel Winkler as joining the council. We'll have to have a vote, I guess, on that. So...
I'll make a motion to appoint Joel Winkler, who's our city council, I'm making a city council decision.
Well, according to, if no one's going to second that, or, so we can vote on it, I think the rule states that the people that don't vote for it, if a person I appoint has to give a written explanation why. And I'd like to see those also.
We didn't get to a vote, though.
Vote five?
Motion failed due to no second. There was no vote.
Well, I know there was no vote, but I appointed him.
Am I writing explanation? Where do you want it written?
I'll have to come up with another person to appoint, I guess. I don't have one right now.
Were you not allowed to nominate? I'm not sure how it works, so...
Well, I'm supposed to appoint somebody.
The mayor appoints with consent of council. If you want to, you know, make suggestions to him, you sure can.
Okay. Well, the other two names that we've gotten are Beth Brokamp. I'm not sure if you're still interested.
Um, I could be in the running. I just also accepted a position on the CTC board here recently, too.
Okay. And then Jackie Heidman. Those are the two names that have came up, so...
Well, I just, the only reason I appointed Joel is because he had the highest votes. And I figured he had, should be the will of the people. Okay, well, that was the, the only other thing I wanted to, I don't plan on, as far as how I want to run the meetings anyway, is, you know, as far as this is a council meeting, for the city council, we'll have a, oh, after the, we adjourn the meeting, if someone wants to give, have a two or three-minute discussion, you know, up to five people of things you think that the city needs to work on or do. We'll listen to that after the meeting, for a while, anyway. We might as well go ahead and have the treasurer's report then now.
So as of December 31st, corn stock has $6,866.29. Donations, $1,055.69. General, $154,885.70. Library has zero. Playground, $8,000, which is the walking trail. Special City and Highway, $4,898.39. Special Parks and Rec, $244.88. Trash, $2,892.95. John, do you see where I'm reading that from?
Well, I'm looking right here.
Okay. So, here's the December, right here.
Yeah.
Monthly balance. This is the action that was, activity that happened during the month.
Okay. Okay, what about, anybody got any questions on that?
Get a copy of it.
What bills we got to pay more than?
I don't. I don't. I have...
Okay, that's all right.
You ready for the bills?
Yep, we're ready.
So we'll start with Leo.
He's not here.
$250 for his salary. Diane, $290. Marlene is $250. The library is $300 a month. Seneca Sanitation, do you have that? Same as last time, you say?
You have a copy of those?
Tomorrow. The bills?
Copy of.
The bills.
I do, except for, like, salaries.
Oh, the chairs.
These are just salaries. So Seneca Sanitation, I don't have that yet. I'll get that from Diane.
That's usually...
It was $1,089. Okay, so then I got a copy of the rest of the bills.
Okay.
Evergy for streetlights, and it's bill number one. Ed Partners...
Was that? That's Dale, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. It was that last time. Ed Partners Co-op, $25.26 for diesel. That's bill number two. Bill number three. Case Analytical for $135. The quarterly report, a quarterly sewer analysis. Bill number four is Kansas Health and Environmental Laboratories. These are quarterly reports that are due in January. $72 for the water analysis for the quarter of October through December. We have another quarterly bill for the Social Security and Medicare taxes on the wages, and the wages were $2,450 for the quarter, so we pay $375.85 to the IRS, or to State Bill number six is water protection and clean drinking water fees for the quarter of October through December, and it's $74.21 on 1,197,000 gallons of water. Bill number seven is the Kansas Retailer Sales Tax, and it's just paying sales tax back on the water sales tax. And that's $74.54. This is incorrect. Okay, so bill number eight is Dennis White, July through December. Is it on the front?
Yeah, it's right there. You can come back to...
$3,199.40, and that's July through December. Marvin Planning Consultants. Bill number nine is $2,700 for the comprehensive plan. And bill number 10 is Adams Jones Law Firm. And that's the bills. That's all of them.
On those, bill number nine and bill number 10, are they, did the council vote on those? Do you know?
Um, the council, I don't know. I have to ask Diane, but I think they voted on $1,000, but not on these companies. I think that was Michler.
They voted to approve their contracts, though. They voted to approve both of their contracts.
They, we voted that they're our lawyers, so whatever they, we allow them to do their, what we ask them to do, that's the way we have to pay them.
We got enough donations to cover the last two bills in?
There's $13,400 in donations at this point. Uh, no, I take that back. There is...
I gave you guys a sheet of what I have. Can you have that?
$11,000, and there's two donations that went in.
See if you can match.
Damn it, I printed the wrong thing off.
I did a zoning sheet of what I have.
You did?
Do you have that?
Uh, yeah, there's one over here. Can you grab one of those zoning ones there? There's one in front of you there, for Diane.
Thank you.
See if you can match me. What's I'm missing, sir?
Looks like that.
There was another $5,500 deposited. I had one printed off, but I, I thought I printed it off. I printed the bills off twice, so...
Basically?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I mean, there was another $3,000 donated here. You should have another $2,500 in what I've given you. So, there's been, like, $11,500 deposited so far.
So then I need to get whoever those are and figure out who they are, so I can get it in there. Maybe I have it tagged differently.
Well, and that would be, that would be $11,000. There's been $5,500 deposited since you did your report, probably. You just did it to the end of December?
Um, that's all I have. I, I...
I mean, it's just to the end of December, right? Yeah, so...
Which is all I have. I don't think I have any in January, except for, I didn't have this.
And there should be another one. Well, Diane would have mailed it to you, I think.
Okay.
Would have you, did you mail that other one to her or not?
The January one, okay.
Yeah, so...
And how much was that one?
$2,500.
The council voted to pay him either way. Voted to hire him.
Yeah, we voted to hire him, so, either way, we have to pay him. Now, where that comes from is what we're talking about here, what he's, his question is, is, but it's not even for this, really, discussion here. We have to, I don't think it's a choice.
I guess, in my opinion, when we vote to pay him is when we approve, you know, make a motion to pay the bills and second them.
I mean, I mean...
You know, from where we're at now.
Yeah, and going forward.
Like for Kurt, that we hired him for our turn.
Well, I think the business, if we're going to stop going forward, the business is another piece of business. A motion, taxless, we're not, anything from now on is, we're not paying, but these, this is just...
There's a discrepancy.
Yeah, thirty-nine, if you pay them.
Marvin Plant, his total bill was, is supposed to be $10,000, and then Hughes, it'll just depend on how much we use him. I think originally he thought $3,000 to $5,000, but that's going to depend on what we use
Was there any questions on the bills? From anybody?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bo's saying. I guess they pass, so go ahead and say the bill.
Hey, Mayor, can I make a comment? In the minutes reflected that I'd sent a statement reflecting a fee increase, which is correct. Basically, I, I had offered municipalities a subsidized, lower rate, and I just said I was no longer going to do that, but I'd continue to offer the lowest rate, which is $180, okay? I think it read that I was going to raise it from 180 to 240, but anyway, I'm just, I, I would continue to charge the city at 180 instead of the $100...
Did I read that wrong?
Municipal rate that I previously charged for the last 10 years.
So the current rate is 180?
180, yes, for municipalities.
Okay, I must have read that wrong. I'll re, I'll change the minutes. I'll revise the minutes with that. I'll reread that. Okay, there's one more. I'm sorry. I didn't get ready for this bill. I have it laid here, and I didn't make sure you got it. One more for Brok...
We have another bill. We have another bill.
Okay.
We're going to, uh, Brokamp Electric for $75.
(inaudible). I had to read through that light out there. Okay.
Anybody have any follow-ups adding that to the...
The community center.
Bill already presented.
What did you do?
Is it back there? Okay, let me see. What is it? He's wanting to know what he did. It was that light on the back door. Labor for Travis and Parker. I don't know what he did to it. It's, it's... I know that it was not working again on the back door.
Is that the misplaced, because it kept being icing water in it?
I think that's what it was, and it was still under warranty, but he had to charge labor. The labor's not under warranty, I think.
Is that the kitchen?
Well, I think we got the bills paid and minutes approved. You want to give your report now on the streets?
Okay, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to talk about the street project, or the, not street project, the zoning project we got going on. And I would like to include Dennis White and possibly calling Pat Hughes up, and I believe we'll need some help with information for that from Diane, so we at least need you for information to get a hold of him if we want to.
Okay.
And, uh, for 20 minutes. Anything else I need?
Any objections?
I'll second it.
All right. Let's go visit for 20 minutes. Well, I think we're going to have a motion to have another 15-minute discussion.
I'll make a motion, take that back into the executive session. We'll resume back here at, at 8:15.
Well, we call a meeting back to order. I don't know if there's someone who's to make a motion to the, what we discussed.
I mean, I won't make a motion, but we can have some discussion here, at least. So, just throw out there, if one thing we talked about is solving that, at least we know that's going on. I'll start over on that, on the key. On the way over to South or on that, they would like to do that, or just table everything until next month, so that's just pushing the ball down the road.
I guess me personally, I would mind digesting everything for a little more time. Dennis, after each month, I mean, always, you know, request a special meeting. That's mine for the month. Decision for either way you go, sort of next 30 years, another month, 30 days, shouldn't these things ask for you.
So, that being said, I'll make a motion to table this until we can either have a special meeting or a month. special meeting or a month.
Any objections? Okay.
I'll second.
We'll table it then for thirty days.
Who's second? Brian?
Brian.
I guess it carried, did it all, did it carry?
Table it for thirty days.
All in favor, I mean, everybody, okay.
Yep.
So we don't like to table it for thirty days, though, right?
It could be a special meeting, we have to...
We can call a meeting next week.
Three people, I think just three people have to, or you have to table it.
What's it take?
Question, Mayor, I believe.
Yeah.
Well, we'll move on to other business then, for things like that. I don't know, I was, this, uh, thing on here, this forever model, I mean, that's already done, right? We're not talking about it anymore. Mary Jones' dog issue is also done.
Has anybody seen it running loose? I stopped at the community center to drop off some towels one morning, and the dog that looked a lot like it came running out, and I don't have any idea, I don't know if anybody else has seen it around. So, week or so, January the sixth. And so it was just a week or so ago, but I don't know if it was that dog or not, it was a dog that looked an awful lot like it, and I thought it came out, I mean, I heard it come running out of, like, that fence, but I didn't see where it actually came from.
Uh, Danny, but he ain't seen it yet, but he hasn't been looking for it.
Danny? Okay. Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure it is gone.
All right, and the City Hall is pretty well done, isn't it?
Uh, we do have a bid, I emailed it to you all today. I don't know what you want to do with the leaks in Jerry Bowden. Jerry Bowden had reported two leaks. I went ahead and called Midwest Roofing, that's who put the roof on, it was completed in October of two thousand and seven, it's under warranty till October of two thousand and twenty-two. They did come and look at it, and it, the collector box and downspout has pulled away from the roof material, and it's going to be about six hundred and eighty dollars to repair. That's not on the warranty. And the bid tells you what they're doing, like, they have to take it off and clean it, and I don't know what else. And I don't know if someone else could do it cheaper, or, I have no idea. It just says remove existing collector head and downspout, clear the clogged debris from the downspout, reattach with new fasteners, fasten roof membrane inside collector head, and clean up job site for six hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents.
One of you guys looked at it?
This one back there, going towards the...
Yeah, yeah, it's in that corner over there, on the north, northeast corner of the building, and there's, yeah. And he thought both leaks were a result of the same problem. And Jerry called again today, he said, whatever they did, because they fixed it temporarily, but he said whatever they did didn't help, because it was really leaking bad today from the, you know, we haven't had that much moisture.
I've looked at it a couple times, and I remember changing the lines, that happened to Brock eventually, if you're to re, if you're to check one, it's not, if they didn't give you a way to fix it, I'd let him do it, because you're going to have to have Crane do it.
I don't, yeah, I don't have any idea.
There's no reason not to do it, is there?
We've had some discussion before what to do or use the City Hall for in the future, you know, I guess that's something to bring up, if we want to spend some money in there to make it more usable, you know. Currently bathrooms don't work, one of bathrooms, I don't, I don't believe, you know, heat in there.
Furnaces don't work.
Furnaces doesn't work, so, but that leaking water's affecting the integrity of the roof or something, we're at least going to have to pay for that, get that solved, not above, it's not safe to go in, so. Did they say they're making sure we do it, didn't they?
I think pretty quick. I mean, I, I...
Well, I make a motion now to do it, and they're just doing the fixes on the, so...
I'll second that. Motion has been made and seconded to go ahead and fix the roof over at the City Hall. Any objections or any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, passed, so, call them and tell them to get it fixed, yes.
I guess on that, which is my sort of like stipulation, if they don't fix the leaks and...
Okay, but if the roof itself is still under warranty until two thousand and twenty-two is over. Yeah, I mean, if that's a problem, I mean, I'm sure they...
Can I, do you get any bids on the, the Goon fans?
If I reach out, it's long, I have thirty minutes left, yeah, mine will be, I won't use it, can't come back yet, I might know that one later, but I have thirty minutes.
But I'm assuming you try to follow up with them?
Who'd you all reach out to, Dallas?
I'll look, I'm Mr. Gackman, I think it's Gackman, maybe?
Bossy?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got it in other minutes.
Well, there probably is no hurry on it.
Nope.
Grass ain't growing yet. What's the deal on the state yard signs?
We want to put bigger signs out there, because we still have, continually have problems with people dumping...
With Johnny's?
Shingles and...
We can buy a battery and pour it back.
Yeah, we can, I mean, those are what we've gotten bids for. So which one, you're talking about the second one of Becky's?
I'll take back the last one.
That one eighty?
There's a price, I'm also, everybody had one, so I'll, I'll just go along, I'll do it now.
What's that?
At least add one, I like cheap enough, if somebody runs over a bird that's a pretty middle one.
I'm making a motion to purchase from, from the, before by a, white man, a quarter day, pots of four for around eighty dollars, including shipping, and then also what, whatever the pots were hurt to letter it, with whatever letter you want to put on it. I don't know if we written up, just, you know, it doesn't matter, you can say whatever you want.
So can you make a second to go ahead and buy the signs and get them installed? Any more questions? He's going to take care of that, Dallas.
I'm here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So I guess get the order of signs. Any other further old business? That we need to talk about? If not, we'll move on to new business. What is the reason Kane doesn't just get those water meter pits fixed?
What's that?
But the reason Kane don't just get those water meters fixed.
Well, he was wanting, is he still here?
Yeah, I do. So there's a couple that are pretty broken, deteriorated, sure it's fallen in there now. I don't know, it's probably three or four that probably needed attention pretty quick. You know, we fixed the one for Gracie Eaters, chair and house for daycare, we have a lot of that too left. We probably did the two or three, I don't know what that cost, you know?
I, I don't, I don't know.
I guess, I don't know if it's something to look at now, some are in priority back.
I'll just get it done.
Yeah.
Only if it goes where you think it'd be, for where I feel like third, I'll get it done, it's going to work, right?
Leo?
So go ahead and do it, I mean, do you want it done by the hour, or how do you?
Is it shoveling or equipment work, or, I mean, opposite grounds, I get pretty frozen pretty soon.
Probably, I mean, unfortunately, it's freezing now, but if we can get a cold staff, hopefully they're going to...
Freeze or whatever.
Um, shovel. Dig them down as far as we can to get it cut, and just, we just extended it out of it back, so. Try it on that, I guess. Probably three hours for two people to do it, plus material.
You have a list of which ones, either how many we need, we can find for them, whether...
Next month, I'll just write down the worst one, I guess, and then we can go from there.
I know Jake and Beth definitely needs one, a writer.
I can measure how much dew we have, and try to see if they have that material. I just want to think that you guys were, you probably are experiencing a little, doing something.
It's going to take care of.
Okay.
We don't want them freezing.
What's that?
We don't want them freezing.
Yeah. And I don't think they're remaining in the dew now, I mean, it's open today, they got the fall, you know?
Yeah. I mean, they, I would imagine some of them have been like that for a little while, you know?
Yeah.
Leo always took care of it.
Any other new business? Somebody want to make a, a motion to adjourn then? I'll make a motion to adjourn, maybe?
I'll second.
Meeting adjourned.